Oh, no. It went live and now it's saying the stream could not be.
British winters really get.
Thank you very much. If there are no further matters, I'd ask for somebody to propose the minutes of the 23rd of December, please. councillor Pennington and councillor Ripley to second, and all those in favour, please show.
Thank you. I just wanted to advise everybody, councillor Breen certainly was at that meeting and councillor Gray was not, so I'm going to amend the minutes, mister mayor. So councillor Breen did attend and councillor Gray had sent his apologies. Thank you.
Councillor Murray, please.
Thank you, mister mayor. Just quickly, STC 01255, the draft budget for 2025-26. I just ask, I forgot to do it at the time, I apologise. I abstained from voting, I'd like that recorded on the minutes, please.
Yep.
So on STC 12246, I've got two points. First of all, it refers to two requests to speak, but it was only one resident has recorded. Is it that it should be one person requested to speak?
Yes.
Yep. And secondly, I assume the notes from the speaker at that meeting will be attached to the final minutes, is that correct?
It is.
And then STC 122417, can I check that STC response on the PSPOs was submitted to the district council?
Yes, it was.
Finally, STC 01257, number of points were made at the last meeting regarding the day 80. I just want to make sure that we're going to be tracking that and taking progress updates in STC. Just to make sure that things move in the right direction.
Yes, yes.
Regular reports into the town council meeting.
Thank you very much. If there are no further matters, I'd ask for somebody to propose the minutes of the 23rd of December, please. councillor Pennington and councillor Ripley to second, and all those in favour, please show.
Thank you. That is passed.
Next one is to approve the minutes of the extraordinary council meeting of Sandwichtown Council held on 13th of January 2025, and this is to consider any matters arising from those minutes, not covered elsewhere in the agenda. This is attachment number two.
Thank you. I just wanted to advise everybody, councillor Breen certainly was at that meeting and councillor Gray was not, so I'm going to amend the minutes, mister mayor. So councillor Breen did attend and councillor Gray had sent his apologies. Thank you.
Councillor Murray, please.
Thank you, mister mayor. Just quickly, STC 01255, the draft budget for 2025-26. I just ask, I forgot to do it at the time, I apologise. I abstained from voting, I'd like that recorded on the minutes, please.
Yep.
So on STC 12246, I've got two points. First of all, it refers to two requests to speak, but it was only one resident has recorded. Is it that it should be one person requested to speak?
Yes.
Yep. And secondly, I assume the notes from the speaker at that meeting will be attached to the final minutes, is that correct?
It is.
And then STC 122417, can I check that STC response on the PSPOs was submitted to the district council?
Yes, it was.
You've got your comments wrong way round.
What?
They were from the December one, and your previous ones were from the January one, so...
Apologies for that.
But they were still being added.
We split them.
Still being added.
So the reference numbers, yeah, that's not a problem at all.
Yeah. And did we have any other matters arising from the extraordinary meeting? If we don't have any, could I have a proposer and a seconder, please? Councillor Chuca and councillor Mallett, and all those in favour of the meeting, the minutes of the extraordinary meeting, please show. I believe that's everyone. Thank you very much. That item has been passed. And the next one is to approve the minutes of, or rather, to receive the minutes of the planning committee held on the 9th of December 2024, and this is attachment number three. Does anybody have any matters arising on the planning minutes? If not, I'd like a proposer and a seconder for the planning minutes. Councillor Chuca to propose and councillor Morehouse to second, and all those in favour, please show. I've got two abstentions.
I wasn't here.
Yep.
I was to your either.
Okay. That item has been passed. Thank you very much. And to receive the minutes of the finance and general purposes committee held on the 18th of December 2024, this is attachment number four. Does anybody have any matters arising from the FNGP meeting? If we don't have any matters arising, I'd like a proposer and a seconder. Councillor Wildes proposing and councillor Pennington seconding, and all those in favour, please show your cards. And to receive the minutes of the human resources committee held on the 30th of October 2024, and this is attachment number five. Are there any matters arising on these minutes? If not, I would ask for a proposer.
I've definitely got the right meeting this time. I substituted for councillor Breen at the meeting, but also in attendance was councillor Morehouse and councillor Murray for the open section of the meeting, but the names are not recorded.
Thank you very much. Could I have a proposer for the HR minutes, please? councillor Franklin and councillor Black seconding those. All those in favour, please show. That's everybody. That has been passed. Thank you. And finally, to receive the minutes of the heritage and townscape committee meeting held on 13th of November 2024, and this is attachment number six. Do we have any matters arising from H and T committee? If not, I'll ask for a proposer and a seconder for that meeting. Councillor Mallett and councillor Morehouse seconding, and all those in favour, please show. Two abstentions from councillor Franklin and councillor Murray. Thank you very much, councillors. Item number five on your agenda is the payment schedules, and 5A is to receive and note the payments that missed the December schedule payments totaling £207.41, and that is attachment 7A. Item 5B is to receive and approve the schedule payments for mid-January 2025 totaling £35,539.72, and that's attachment 7B. And 5C is to receive and approve the schedule payments for the end of January 2025 totaling £3,017.05. I would like to take these on block unless anybody has any particular issues with any of those. Could I have a proposer for items 5A, 5B and 5C? Thank you, councillor Breen and councillor Franklin is seconding. All those in favour, please show. One abstention from councillor Wildes. Thank you. That has been passed. And item 5D is cancelled to confirm nomination of two signatories to authorize the end of January 2025 payment schedules on bank line. So we best have these individually. So the first one is two signatories for the end of January 2025. I'm prepared to put myself forward. Is there a second signatory? Councillor Wildes. So could we just vote on that if everybody's in favour of those two signatories? That's agreed. Thank you very much. And item 5E is cancelled to confirm nomination of two signatories to authorize the mid-February 2025 payment schedules on bank line. I'm just going to put myself forward. Could we have a second signatory? Okay, and councillor Franklin. Does that be councillor Carter and councillor Franklin for the mid-February payment schedules? Could we just vote on that, please? That's agreed. Thank you. Item number six, public participation. This is a 20-minute session set aside for members of the public to make representations at the meeting in respect of the business on the agenda and other matters if time permits. Individual representation should not exceed five minutes. Written notice of the desire to exercise the right to speak together with the topic to be addressed must be given to the town clerk prior to noon on the day of the meeting. Do we have any members of the public?
No, no requests, mister mayor.
No requests. Thank you very much. Councillor Mallett and councillor Morehouse seconding. And all those in favour, please show.
Two extensions.
Yeah.
Two extensions from councillor Franklin and councillor Murray. Thank you very much, councillors. Um, item number five on your agenda is the payment schedules. And, um, five A is to receive and note the payments that missed the December schedule payments, totaling two hundred and seven pounds and forty one pence. Um, and that is attachment seven A. Item five B is to receive and approve the schedule payments for mid-January um, twenty twenty five, totaling thirty five thousand five hundred and thirty nine pounds and seventy two pence. And that's attachment seven B. And five C is to receive and approve the schedule payments for the end of January twenty twenty five, totaling uh, three thousand and seventeen pounds and five pence. Um, I would like to take these on block unless anybody has any particular issues with any of those. Um, could I have a proposer for items five A, five B and five C? Thank you councillor Breen and councillor Franklin is seconding. All those in favour, please show. One extension from councillor Wilds. Thank you, that has been passed. Uh, and item five D is cancelled to confirm nomination of two signatories um, to authorize the end of January twenty five payment schedules on bank line. Um, so we best have these individually. So the first one is two signatories for the end of January twenty twenty five. I'm prepared to put myself forward. Is there a second signatory?
Okay.
Councillor Wilds. So, um, could we just vote on that if everybody's in favour of those two signatories?
Yep.
That's agreed, thank you very much. And item five E is cancelled to confirm nomination of two signatories to authorize the mid-February twenty twenty five payment schedules on bank line. Once again, I'll put myself forward. Um, could we have a second signatory? Okay, and councillor Franklin. Does that be councillor Carter and councillor Franklin for the mid-February payment schedules? Could we just vote on that, please? That's agreed, thank you, in favour. Item number six, public participation. This is a twenty minute session is set aside for members of the public to make representations at the meeting in respect of the business on the agenda and other matters if time permits. Individual representation should not exceed five minutes. Written notice of the desire to exercise the right to speak, together with the topic to be addressed, must be given to the town clerk prior to noon on the day of the meeting. Do we have any members of the public?
No, no requests, Mr Mayor.
No requests, thank you very much. Item number seven.
Um, could we do something about the heating by closing the door now?
Oh, indeed, of course. Councillor Gray, did you have a question?
Can I make, can I make a short point of order on this, please? Um, standing order five one three D states that in the public participation, um, if anyone gives a copy of their speech to the town clerk, it should be attached to the minutes of the meeting. Um, there have been complaints from the authority recently that this is often done. I know that they, some of the speeches have been published on the website that I would query whether that complies strictly with our standing orders. And could I ask in future that, that the, any speeches are actually attached to the minutes of the meeting?
Thank you. So my interpretation, councillor Gray, is that the notes, the speaker notes are attached to the minutes when they're agreed. That's my interpretation of that standing order. If you're telling me it's different, then obviously, oh, you know, I don't know what your interpretation was when you, and then councillor Black did them, but that's how I've been looking at them. And the minutes are obviously published on the website as soon as they are signed off. And that's how I've been working. Yeah.
Thank you for the, uh, for the comment, councillor Gray. Um, item number seven is verbal report from our Dover district councillors on matters directly relating to Sandwich. Councillor Morehouse, would you address the chamber when you're prepared to do so?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, right, starting off with fifty seven months, can you say? There is a motion on the, um, agenda for Wednesday's forthcoming D D C meeting for further action to be taken by D D C's enforcement of legal team. Uh, in addition to that, last week I was contacted by the player F D A, planning and development manager, D D C requesting a meeting in the near future, which I'm looking at my work commitments to arrange said meeting and will endeavour to provide an update before our next S T C meeting. I, I won't be able to arrange anything before the next planning meeting, the tenth of, uh, February. But the meeting will take place between the tenth and the twenty fourth. Um, regarding the plea for tree planting on the Montague Place that I've spoken about in the past, I've requested a meeting with the volunteer tree board to discuss the report that she submitted to D D C Planning Enforcement in June twenty twenty three, identifying non-conformance with the landscaping master plan and failure to either plant or maintain trees in accordance with conditions that were set as part of the development. On Tuesday, the fourth of February, I'm attending a member briefing for the planning proposals to build three hundred and eighty eight homes at the Discovery Park site. All right, uh, with respect to events, I've discussed in brief in the meeting prior to Christmas. So I've been advised that D D C have met the costs for the T T R O for the butchery. That's a cost of nine hundred and ten pounds to D D C and that covers the period from the first of April twenty twenty five until the thirtieth of September twenty twenty six. Not such positive news to communicate regarding the waste collection of the vents. Fees and charges have been introduced by D D C as part of the O D A, beginning to recharge the D D C Waste Department for additional clearance of events around the district during twenty twenty four. The O D A have stated that the additional clearances were in addition to the contract rates and therefore would be charging D D C for the additional clearance. Unfortunately, there is no budget put aside within the waste budget to accommodate these extra costs. So the cost of the additional clearances are going to be passed on to the event organisers. It's been estimated that to comply with the newly proposed fees for refuse collections, costing per would be between two hundred and seventy pounds and six hundred and thirty five pounds per event. Multiply that over the number of events we have, we've got quite a significant cost. Today, I attended a Microsoft Teams meeting with regards to the Folk and Ale Festival, where it's been confirmed that the compensation scheme for the loss of party revenue will be applicable to Martha Street, the grassy area, the car, the key car park and the D D C own section of the Guildhall Car Park, which is used for the Christmas ice event. I am advised that I will be notified of both the commercial and community rates by the end of this week. I've been promised this in the past. I hope this time I, I have news on what those costs are going to be because I know the events organisers are getting twitchy about the costs incurred. On Wednesday, the twenty second of January, I attended a presentation by the chief executive, Nadim Aziz, on the potential devolution arrangements for East Kent. Please report that one of the councillors, the leader of the Conservative group, has tabled a motion for the forthcoming D D C meeting on Wednesday, requesting that far more, suggesting that far more information is required from central government due to the district councils in East Kent having significantly different levels. Council tax, reserves, house building targets, debt and parking charges. The potential impacts of changes to local government needs to be fully understood. Concludes mine.
Thank you, councillor Morehouse. Before you sit down, can I ask you, um, two questions? Do you get notifications about, one, about applications of licensed premises? And secondly, do you get notified about road closures for events as a ward councillor?
Yes.
You do? Oh, could I ask you, just as a backup, to notify the assistant town clerk in future? Because, um, previously, um, we had asked whether we could be notified as a council of licensed premise applications and event closures, road closures. And we've now been told that will no longer be possible from Dover District Council. So if they do come through to yourself, if you could pass them on to the assistant town clerk and then they could be brought forward to this council, thank you very much. Thank you for your report. Item number eight is a verbal report from our Kent County councillor on matters directly relating to Sandwich. Councillor Chandler, would you, um, I believe, wants councillor Chandler to stand.
She's not on camera at the moment, so if you want to be on camera, you can go and come to this side of the house or if you want to stay off camera.
This side?
It doesn't matter which, yeah, you were out, off camera, but yeah, yeah, I know, I realise that, that's why I was doing it, so.
Um, it's not designed to be on camera, but it's just a design to note that I'm in the best place. Um, I'm actually going to start where councillor Morehouse, um, concluded his report um, on the devolution proposals, um, from the government. Um, I, uh, emailed to councillors before, both before Christmas but and with a, um, significant update at the beginning of January. Um, and since that update, uh, I can advise that, um, the Kent County Council Cabinet on the tenth of January uh, made the decision, following a full council meeting with a debate on the subject, to, um, uh, respond to the government's, uh, proposals for devolution to confirm that Kent County Council would wish to be part of the Devolution Priority Programme. And, uh, there is a timetable that accompanies that, um, which means that the, uh, local government reorganisation that councillor Morehouse was referring to, um, it, it comes more quickly as a consequence of that. So, uh, to be clear, um, the devolution programme and the local government reorganisation will apply to the whole country, it is not an optional, um, thing. Um, it is the timetable which is different for those areas which opt for, to, to be on the Devolution Priority Programme. Um, it is by no means, uh, certain that just because a council, uh, applies, they will be on that programme, so seventeen, uh, county council areas or combined county council and unitary areas, um, have applied for the priority programme. Uh, the numbers that government are indicating will actually be on that programme vary between four and ten, I think, probably at the moment. Um, we do not have that news at the moment. It, it, um, is currently suggested that it will come at the end of this week, but, but uh, as with all government announcements, that is not necessarily certain. Um, so obviously, as soon as, um, as soon as I have further news, I'm sure you're here on the media before I have an opportunity to, to get it to councillors, but nevertheless, um, I will make sure I advise councillors. Um, so, um, there are two parts, clearly as I put in my update. Uh, so the first part is the, uh, mayor's strategic authority, which, um, will come into being, uh, if the Devolution Priority Programme applies to Kent, will come. The first elections for the mayor will be in May twenty twenty six. Uh, the timetable for local government reorganisation that subsequently follows that, um, will, i- is not quite as clear cut. Um, and councillor Morehouse referred to the fact that there are limited details at the moment of that proposal. However, government has requested, um, the initial proposals for local government reorganisation, uh, in March of this year. Uh, councillor Morehouse will undoubtedly know because of the briefing he has had that, um, there have been a number of meetings with leaders of district councils across Kent. Um, and which, um, which is not necessarily the case across all counties. So that they, um, there was, um, the, the last meeting with leaders of district councils and borough councils took place on Wednesday of this last week. So, um, it, there, um, there will be a continuing process, but, but we cannot begin that process, whichever it is to be, until we, um, are aware of whether we are on that priority programme or not. Um, so, um, that, that this will be, whilst Sandwich Town Council, I should emphasise, remains unchanged in this process. Um, it will undoubtedly have consequential changes, um, in due course, particularly with regard to local government reorganisation, uh, for things that the town council, um, is involved in. For example, uh, the, um, planning, uh, process, which will ultimately, um, become part of the responsibilities of the unitary councils uh, when they are in place. Um, I spoke at the full council meeting, um, about the advantages, as I saw it, that could accrue from the devolution process, that is, the, um, increased strategic, um, powers that would devolve to a mayor in Kent in terms particularly of, um, strategic highways planning, um, strategic local planning and the increased powers over the, um, control of such things as, uh, the work that utilities might do, um, on our roads. Um, so there were a number of things that I could see from that, that, from the correspondence I get from residents in, in Sandwich and the villages, um, that could be of benefit in terms of the strategic powers that the mayor, um, accrues for Kent, um, for the residents of Sandwich. But I, I emphasised there was not the opportunity to do anything other than consider that myself in the light of correspondence I had had from residents. Um, so, um, I will keep the council up.
Thank you very much.
Um, two final things, um, the, um, nature recovery strategy, which I know, um, that some people in Sandwich have responded to and taken part in the consult, in, in the work that has contributed, um, to writing the draft strategy is now out for consultation. Uh, it will be out for consultation until the twelfth of March. So if anybody is particularly interested, um, in that, um, in that piece of work, then please do go online, look at the draft, nature recovery strategy and make comments. Um, equally, the town council may wish to do so, um, but it doesn't necess, is not necessarily obliged to, of course. And finally, on a slightly lighter note, um, uh, whilst sort of commending the work of the Tourism Forum and indeed the Heritage and Townscape committees that there are, uh, that Sandwich Town Council contribute to, I, I brought with me, um, two pamphlets, um, that I'm going to leave with the clerk so that they can be archived in the appropriate way, um, which are official handbooks published by the Sandwich Corporation, one in nineteen forty eight and one which is undated, but, uh, those with more knowledge than me can probably date it because it refers to the new extension to the Guildhall. Um, so obviously encouraging tourism in Sandwich has been a longstanding aspiration, um, of the council. And, um, I thought these might be of interest, so I'm going to give them to the town clerk to ensure that they get archived. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Chandler. Gift to the archives.
Thank you. Um, I'm happy to answer questions, Mr Mayor, though, aren't I?
Indeed. Um, councillor Franklin.
Was it new, sort of, not sure how it's going to be structured, King County Council? Does that mean it'll have a bigger budget? Because, um, we've had it over the last few years, spland up a sale, if you look at the old barracks at Canterbury and they had a housing rating list and they got outbid by a London council. Will this mean that Kent will be able to stop London boroughs buying land here? So more local people will be able to have houses and not, people from London being basically put here, just in house with no job prospects or, because we haven't got enough jobs here. We, we get overabundance of London councils, Lewisham and Greenwich. Building estates for Londoners, we want estates for local people.
Um, I'm not sure that that will be part of the, um, the, the local government legislation that comes into place. Um, in terms of, uh, increased finance, so with the devolved powers that the mayor will get in terms of the strategic authority. And incidentally, uh, once the mayor's strategic authority is in place, Kent County Council will no longer, uh, be exist effectively. There may be some crossover because, uh, Kent County Council does strategic, um, work and delivery of services. Uh, and clearly it cannot cease the work it does on delivery of services until the new unitary councils are in place uh, to take over that work, because they will, they will take the delivery of services that Kent County Council does now in terms of, uh, social services and possibly, um, some of the more direct highways, uh, maintenance and things like that. Um, however, what will come is some very specific, uh, finance to do with strategic planning, um, which comes with the devolved powers. Uh, additionally, what is likely to come are three-year settlements for the, um, for the mayor's strategic authority and indeed the unitary authorities when they're in place. So that's been part of the local government, uh, that's been part of the commitment from government, uh, to local government. But it's unlikely that that will come until the reorganisation has taken place.
Thank you. Councillor Ripley and then councillor.
Yeah, I just wondered if you could, um, explain his, um, what perceived benefit he's going to be of us, um, potentially getting on this priority programme and how the whole community, the impact on little towns on the edge like ours.
So, um, the, um, the benefit of opting for the priority programme, yeah, it comes in terms of the, um, the timescale in which those devolved powers, um, and the finance that comes with those devolved powers, uh, will come, uh, to an authority that opts for it. So, um, there is, there is a timescale and you have to be an established mayor or strategic authority in order to be able to accrue those. The sooner you are on that journey, the sooner you will accrue the extra finance and the devolved powers, uh, which can benefit, um, the, the whole of Kent effectively. Um, so in terms of, um, the benefits that might accrue in, for, for Sandwich particularly, um, in, there was some discussion when the local transport plan, for example, was published by Kent, that it was a wishlist and that there wasn't the finance to do that properly and it didn't, it wasn't able to take that network into consideration. Um, and that includes the road network because we, um, can, uh, suffer in this part of Kent as a consequence of the increased traffic from the port, from Eurotunnel, because of all that traffic that comes through Kent. Um, a, uh, the ability of a mayor or strategic authority to, um, to look at that, uh, wider network and to have a local transport plan which takes account of that, to have, uh, a different relationship with national, uh, national highways, there are now, um, to have a different relationship with national highways in terms of sufficient planning. highways in terms of sufficient planning, but also some finance to contribute towards that kind of infrastructure, could benefit not just Sandwich, but many of the villages in this part of Kent as well, because of the pressures that we have being the gateway to England effectively. In terms of strategic local planning, local plans at the moment are done by individual district and borough councils, and whilst there is a duty to cooperate that is there, that duty to cooperate is not as stringent as providing a local plan for the whole of Kent. And a local plan for the whole of Kent would be able to look much more holistically at the level of development that is required, not just for houses, but also for the infrastructure that has to go with houses, and also for business opportunities and things like that. It would have more ability to ensure that the infrastructure that's required is actually funded in the right way. So possibly not necessarily in terms of Sandwich per se, but Sandwich is fairly affected by development just up the road in Sandwick District Council. At the moment, that is sort of done in relative isolation by Sandwick District Council, whereas if there was a Kent-wide local strategic plan, it would be looked at in a much more holistic way. One of the powers that's actually detailed is that of being able to set lane charges for utility companies. Whilst it's a relatively minor thing, it could potentially change the relationship that we're able to have as a highways authority with utility companies, which at the moment, because of the current way in which the charges are set and the legislation and things like that, we're not able to do in that particular way. There is the ability to address the inward investment in Kent in a different way for business. Now, Discovery Park is very successful, but there would be the ability to make that attraction for inward investment much greater and much easier without the barriers that sometimes come alongside that. So they were some of the things that I spoke about when I spoke at full council.
Thank you very much. Next is councillor Pennington.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. I seem to remember that about six or seven years ago, there was a consultation, which I think was carried out by Calc, on what town and parish councils could see as areas that might be devolved from that time district councils, down to town and parish councils. I just wondered if there was going to be a further consultation, and whether there might be any movement on that issue. Are there things that we could be pushing for that might be better handled locally?
So you're right, there was a consultation. Calc, as I understand it, is going to make their, there will be, well, we are assured there will be a government consultation on the devolution proposals. Calc, as I understand it, are already working to formulate a response that might be, they might feel represents parish councils as a whole, so I'm sure the town council may want to be part of that response. At the moment, there is no suggestion that town and parish councils, in terms of their authority and their power, will change. If that comes, it will be, I suspect, much further down the line. There is nothing to prevent the town council in those consultations, though, from suggesting what might support the local government reorganisation if it goes ahead, and that's entirely within the town council being there to do so.
Indeed, thank you for that. Councillor Black, please.
Is there also proposals that this would give minimum authority, some powers over transport, public transport?
Yes.
And is that purely buses, or does that include rail?
It says public transport. And as you know, as with London, the London mayoral authority, there are greater opportunities. There are some things which are still not entirely clear within this, and in sheer logistical terms, it is more likely that bus transport will be earlier on that agenda than will rail transport, simply because of the current arrangement of franchising with, you know, more locally with bus transport and network rail and such things, and the government's proposals about basically renationalising some of the rail infrastructure and things like that. So I can't answer that specifically, I can only surmise, like, you know, I'm sure you can if you read the devolution paper. But yeah, there are some additional powers over public transport, yes. I did speak, actually, at the council meeting, I spoke about Fannet Parkway, which is a piece of new infrastructure, which was gained probably against considerable odds by Kent County Council, and I just made the point that it is likely that additional infrastructure like that, that could benefit through business, for example, would be easier to deliver under a mayoral strategic authority.
Super, thank you very much for that. And then councillor Morehouse, please stand.
I'm advised that the cost of standing for the election is £5,000, and that there's an additional contribution of £5,000 required for inclusion in candidate booklet. So this smells to me of a two-party stitch-up by the Labour and Conservative parties, which is going to prevent mine parties from standing. I'm also advised that the spending limits are £140,000. That's going to deter very capable people from standing, and it's undermining the democratic process. The two main parties have comprehensively screwed this country during my adult life, and this is just another continuation of the damage that it really caused.
Can I just remind councillors not to make personal comments in the chamber, please? Thank you. I don't believe there's a question there for you to answer, councillor Chandler.
Well, I'd like some confirmation on these causes.
Indeed.
I don't actually know those costs, I'm afraid councillor Morehouse, I can certainly ask the question and see if anybody knows. Clearly, they are limits that are set, not by Kent County Council, and not by any other body that, you know, is represented here.
Thank you very much for your report and taking the questions. That's very kind, I'm very grateful to have you here, so obviously you may remain or leave as you wish.
Tonight, Mr Merrick, it's been a longer day, I will not stay for the whole.
Indeed, that's not a problem at all, it's lovely to have you here, thank you very much. Item number eight is a verbal report from, oh, well, number nine already, sorry, thank you for that, I thought it was useful, hadn't it? Number nine is report from local police representative for Sandwich to receive a report from local police representative, if available. Did we have any communication, councillor Black, from?
I did have communication with PC Lauren over the weekend, obviously around what happened on Friday, so there was a report update to me, that she visited the gentleman twice over the weekend, and just to say that, as councillor Duke advised earlier, there wasn't any further action now, because he's not causing trouble, and so I've had the latest monthly report, I'm sure that'll be coming at the end of this week.
Okay, and perhaps we could distribute that to councillors as when that comes in, if that's okay? Thank you very much. And then item number 10 is updates from councillors to receive, and note verbal updates from councillors on meetings that they have attended as nominated representatives of this council. I would like to start off for a change this evening, and just say that I attended on behalf of, I believe it's councillor Mallett that usually attends, something called DDC Climate and Nature Forum, exceedingly long meeting, that they're now posting, if you do continue councillor Mallett, they're going to extend the timeline to two hours to fit all the work in this. It's a very hard-going meeting, to say the truth. I won't go into all the details, but some of the items were, one item which actually surprised me was the item of idling, and I don't know if anybody had seen, but Dover District Council had put up some very, sorry to say, very prophetic signs about idling at railway crossings, and they're too small and they're too far away that you can't actually read them very well, but I found out that it is an offence under section 42 of the Road Traffic Act 1988, for cars to leave their engines idling unnecessarily at junctions, roads, or outside their own properties. So that's quite an important piece of legislation to remember, so that if we do get people doing that, then obviously we can reduce the emissions that are in our town. There was a large number of other updates from councillors, the only ones I needed to sort of really bring to this council are two things. One thing to do with thermal cameras, which was something that this council looked into, and myself and councillor Mallett have had some communications with warmer parish council, who have got a thermal camera there, but I've now been told that Dover District Council will be buying, purchasing a thermal camera, and there will be an ability to lend that out to Sandwich and other councils to use. Also, they're going to get a number of what are called EE boxes, which are energy efficiency boxes, and these are boxes that would contain items that would help to make people at home benefits or elderly to help them to insulate their homes better, such as letterbox, draft excluders, and different things like that. I asked about the cost of all this, and they said it's all being put forward by DDC, so I said, can we have two boxes, please? So hopefully, they will be generous and give us those. As I say, there's a large number of items to do with that, but I'll perhaps have written a report at some time that can be brought to council on that. I also had, earlier this month, I had a meeting with the, I was asked to lunch, actually, with the Lord Warden, the newly installed new Lord Warden, and the Lord Warden was gauging from all 14 mayors of the sink ports to find out about two things. One thing was how he could help to assist the sink ports in his capacities, Lord Warden, how he could support the sink ports, or what duties he could get involved with as to helping, supporting events or things like that. And the other factor that he got into was to do with tourism and promotion, and he's very keen to try and assist sink ports. He realises that most of them are sort of seaside resorts that have seasonal visitor numbers, and he was asking how we could actually all look together to, instead of promoting each town individually, is jointly promoting all of the 14 towns together. So that was quite useful, actually, because quite a lot of information came out of that. And then just the last thing was, at both of these events, as we've here, there was the talk of devolution, and I just wanted to report back that the solicitor to the Confederation of Sinkports, to whom we subscribe to, have written a letter, which was sent off, signed on behalf of myself as speaker, to Angela Rayner from the government, to ask about all the sink ports and their ability to continue as they are presently on the coast, and not be broken up, as it were. And this is quite relevant, because first of all, one of the main sink ports, which is Hastings, but Hastings is a borough council, and after the devolution, Hastings Borough Council will not exist. And then also, there is a question around about Margate, and the Margate does not have a town council, it has charter trustees, which are dependent upon Fannet District Council, or Fannet District Council will also cease to exist, and so the ability for the charter trustees to continue from a financial point of view would also cease to exist. So we could possibly lose a minimum of two of our sink ports in this reshuffle. And lastly, Fordwich, which is another strong sinkport on the north coast, I've been told that quite possibly they may be moved into the Medway Unitary, away from the rest of the sink ports, which would be in the East Kent Unitary. So there's quite a lot of sort of grave concerns to do with the sink ports all sticking together, so it's a shame. And then the very last thing was to do with, I received a communication from Sir Roger Gale to me personally, to say that he has also deposited a letter with Angela Rayner and the Labour Government to, along the same lines as the sink ports and the towns of Kent and Sussex, to remain as they currently are. So we've got a lot of support there. I'll now take any other updates from councillors who have attended any meetings whilst we've been doing this, and we'll start with councillor Fortescue, would you please stand?
I attended the meeting on Monday, the 13th of January, at Plaig's Cutter, and the purpose of this meeting was to set up an authority to oversee the stretch of the river from Pogas Lee to Stary, in other words, the river, upriver, if I can put it like that, adjacent to our stretch of the river. Attending were myself, obviously, Ian Broughton, who's the Sandwich Harbour master, Tom Reed, who is another member of the Porton Hidgley Commission, various people who have an interest in that stretch of the river that I've mentioned, and Sir Roger Gale. Now, what they decided is to set up a charitable trust to be financed by ground-to-ground property. And I have to say, I'm a bit sceptical that they will be able to raise the money, but anyway, that's their problem, it's not our problem. I thought one or two general points emerged from the discussion, which might be of interest to councillors. As councillors may know, the Environment Agency lumps Kent and Sussex together, it's one region, and the headquarters for the region is in Rhine, Sussex, but they have a quite important base in Plaig's Cutter, a fairly substantial building with offices, meeting rooms, and storage for quite a lot of kit, including a workboat, a remote-controlled grass cutter, and amazingly, a reed cutter, which resembles a Fiddies tank, it's a astonishing piece of thing, and it has tracks on each side, a long arm on each side with reed cutters at the end of the arms. But I'm afraid the annual budget of the Environment Agency has been cut. It falls over £2 million, it's £1.7 million, so it's had a pretty substantial cut. The only other thing that really came up was that the use of the river has increased since Covid. So I suppose that's a good thing, but it does mean that that's more likely to have damage to the banks of the river and bounce accidents in the river.
Indeed, thank you very much for that report, councillor Fortescue. Councillor Mallett, please.
Very briefly, as it's not included in the agenda, you've mentioned, councillor Duke mentioned updates on the VE Day, again, going on from the Porton Hidgley Commission, they've accepted the Dunker Little Ships May More in the start over the in the start over the week and the period leading up to the day of beyond. So we have an extra event. I've spoken also to the new headmaster of Banwells with regard to the possibility of the CCF doing something on the forecourt or wherever, so I need to wire that one up. That will either be their new band or a march. Otherwise, things are sort of ticking along. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much for that update. That's very useful. Did we have any others? Councillor Black.
Not something I've attended, but I believe you are unable to attend the Tourism Forum on the event. I think I've got some apologies from you. In view of the Lord Warden's comments about tourism, would it be possible to get some documentation I could share with the Tourism Forum?
See, indeed.
That was very helpful, thank you.
Councillor Ripley.
Well, I went to the Sandwich and Bloom meeting recently. And apart from their usual magnetism programme of work that they're going to be carrying out this year, they've got several events planned, including a farm produce show in September, cream tea in April and a trip to Wisley, undecided date yet. What they do need is more volunteers, so if anyone do fancy taking up gardening, that would be great. And they're also looking for more community funding as the whole community does benefit from the work that they do. And I'd also like to thank Archer's Low Nursery, who are doing incredible work for the town in terms of providing grants and helping with the work involved. I went to the Gays and Salts meeting this month. Just incredible the amount of hard work done entirely by volunteers there. And the week before last, they had twenty-two volunteers turn up on one day, it's incredible. They've got loads of projects which they're undertaking, ongoing and finished building, including signage, wildflower planting projects and provision of owl and bat boxes. And in twenty twenty-four, they recorded an increase in biodiversity in the area. And there's one other issue that I'd like to raise, which I'm sure will be a great concern to all councillors and one which I think needs to be investigated thoroughly, as it relates directly to the discretion and honesty of this council. At Christmas, there was a Facebook post which seemed to imply that there was corruption within our councils, said Sandwich Town Council and Dover District Council. I would hope this was not the case, but I believe that it is an accusation which needs thorough and comprehensive investigation. This is not something to be ignored and needs addressing because of the damage it can cause to our credibility.
Thank you. Did we have any evidence of that at all councillor? Did we have any screenshots or anything that could be forwarded to the town clerk? Those could be forwarded. I actually had councillor Wiles next and then councillor Gray. Councillor Wiles, please stand.
Yes, very briefly, I attended a meeting of the Friends of the Empire Cinema last week. The committee is starting to act and they've set up a new public Facebook group, which has nearly a hundred and thirty members. They're distributing posters around the town. And we're hoping to recruit someone to the committee who has extensive experience of fundraising from National Lottery, et cetera. He is involved with the art project in Chithamville. It should secure massive funding from various grant awarding bodies. And Julian, the property manager, is currently seeking quotations for architectural plans for the building so that we can look at options and so on, so that the thing is moving forward.
Thank you very much. And then last one is councillor Gray before.
I would like to revert to what councillor Ripley said just now regarding this Facebook post. And I don't think that we should leave it as it is. And I think that we should actually do something about it. And I would like to suggest the solution that I would like to propose a motion pursuant to standing with the six one one, which allows us to propose motions in respect of various matters without written prior notice of the proper officer. And one of these matters is to require a written report. And I think this council should ask the councillor concerned who posted that post to make a written report with evidence of what corruption there has been within this council and within Dover District Council.
Indeed.
And I would like to propose that motion and I would, I would give anyone who might second that.
So that's been seconded by councillor Ripley. So we've got to vote on that. So those that are in favour of the report coming forward, then please show your hands. I think you're going to need the evidence from councillor Ripley. Thank you very much for that councillor Gray and councillor Chukie, sorry. I'll commission you tomorrow.
That's all right, just three things. So a number of us attended the Highway Improvement Plan Session on the eighth of January and it was very successful and actually was very busy just the first couple of hours. It was a five hour stretch. The first couple of hours were very busy, so I'd like to thank all my colleagues who were there with me and alongside me. And we had, as I was doing a rough head count, we had more than seventy residents coming through the door, so that's really good. Second activity, I accompanied councillor Franklin, the assistant town clerk, to a meeting with the head of DDC Planning and Development, Sarah Platts. Also in attendance was councillor Ed Briggs, who is one of the Dover District councillors who's on the planning committee. This was requested by our planning committee because we had a number of issues to raise. And to be honest, it was a very positive meeting. A number of very positive responses were given. And also what was a real good indication was a willingness to have follow-up meetings. For example, one with Nikki Ward and regards tree protection, there's a whole host of issues she has. But also, I think one that keeps on burning a hole when we have planning committee meetings is the, are the issues around conservation and decisions taken at STC level that seem to pass by without any comment at DDC level. So there's going to be a separate meeting, particularly on conservation, where things are now in relation to some of the longstanding decisions taken by STC. The final thing was, last Friday, I visited Life Skills Manor for Autism at Baypoint. And that was a follow-up meeting from a being there before Christmas. I met with the pastoral manager who's really keen for the students there to get more involved in community and voluntary activities in Sandwich. We agreed a number of actions that I'm going to take forward on her behalf. Certainly the big clean-up activity, they want to get involved in that as well, there's the town park and that. But there were a number of other things that would really get them more engaged with Sandwich. Her view was that they're sort of remote in terms of Sandwich, they want to get a bit more involved.
Thank you very much for those reports. Councillor Wiles, could I ask you to come and do the commemorative lighting the candle at eight o'clock, please?
This is for, it's for the eightieth anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz, which is today. And it was recommended that. Need a longer match. It was recommended that a candle be lit at eight o'clock.
This is just to remember all the, all the people that's lives were destroyed or lost due to those dreadful times during the Second World War. And to remember the liberation as we said, the death camps in nineteen forty-five. Councillor Murray.
Thank you, Smith. Lastly, please, just to let you know, the Sandwich Committee lights, AGM will be held next month. Date and time will be specified and the details should be given to the town clerk to produce some website stuff. One person that has thanked councillor Mallett for all this hard work, I've been very busy over this December month with my career. And he's steered the ship regarding getting the lights down in time for the end of January. And him and David Silk should be committed for it. Secondly, in November's meeting, I made a report regarding the Dover District Mayor of Watkins. Councillor Chukie asked me to gain a report from the chair. I've asked the chair, the chair refused to give the report due to confidentiality and personal details. And as I've been told by the chair to tell the councillors, if they request one, then the council will need to email him directly.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Murray. Okay, I don't think we have any more councillor updates. Thank you very much. All that shows the hard work that the Sandwich councillors are doing to improve this community. So thank you for all your hard work there. Item number eleven is the financial information, budget comparison, financial statement, cashbook, bank reconciliation and forecast twenty twenty-four, twenty-five reports. And I propose to take these on block unless anybody has any items that they wish to raise from these. Item eleven A is to receive a note, the Sandwich Town Council Bank Reconciliation as of thirty-first of December twenty twenty-four. That's attachment eight A. Item eleven B is to receive a note, Sandwich Town Council Financial Budget Comparison Report as of thirty-first of December twenty twenty-four, and that is attachment eight B. And item eleven C is to receive a note, the Financial Statement Cashbook as of thirty-first of December twenty twenty-four, and that is item eight C. So I believe. We didn't have any particular exact to note those reports, is that?
Yes, please, yes.
So I would like to propose that we, thank you very much, councillor. Receive and note those reports and councillor Bream quite nicely seconded my proposal. Indeed, councillor Fortescue, please stand.
I just want to ask.
Of course, you're more than welcome.
Regarding eight A, bank account reconciled statements. On the fourth of December twenty twenty-four, it was a payment to Williamson and Barnes. That's two four one two one three, fourteen thousand two hundred and sixty-five pounds and fifty pounds less. That's for the sale of the Maddox. What was that for?
So that was income, that was dividends paid from the Maddox Fund. So, yeah, Williamson and Barnes were the executor and now the shares are all obviously with the town council. But this was the last payment of dividends.
And the bank figure, that's the next one, two four one two four, one thousand seven hundred and sixty-five pounds. Is that, that's also income.
Which line are we talking about?
On the fourth of December, thirty thirty-four, two four one two one four.
Yeah, I'll have to check with the RFA, I'm not too sure what that payment was.
Thank you very much. Councillor Pennington, did you have an inquiry? Please stand.
Just to say that I think it was very useful, if full council could be informed where these reports have already been seen in finance general purposes. Because it is the forum where detailed questions can be asked and we have a convention there that detailed questions should be asked before the meeting. But I feel that if they've been vetted by Finance or General Purposes, then full council should be said that should be told.
Indeed, of course, that's correct. We have had the matter of the fourteen thousand before, that has come up before. Thank you very much for that update.
Somebody's payment might come after the Finance and General Purposes Committee, they might make.
No, these, these reports.
These, yeah.
Yeah, I'll certainly speak to the RFA.
We can do that. So I believe we've had this proposed and seconded. All those in favour, please show. It's agreed. Thank you very much, councillors. Item number twelve is nomination for Calc Community Award Scheme. Members are invited to agree a nomination for the Calc Community Award Scheme. This is attachment number nine. And hopefully you've all seen, there was a number of papers and a and a form to fill in. And basically that we require a nomination for a subject to Calc to put forward for this scheme. This is a scheme, it actually comes out very much like the Merrill Civic Award for Sandwich. So I believe it should not be somebody that is either an employment or that is serving as an elected member, so it'd have to be a community member. In case sort of everybody was sort of stumped a bit.
I was going to say, it can be a group as well as an individual person.
Oh, super. Oh, that's ideal. Oh, thank you very much. But in case, in case there was a lack of nominations being put forward from the mayoral chair, I was quite happy to actually put forward an individual. And that was to actually put forward a lady called Siobhan Matthews, who, I don't know if many of you know her, but she's supported a large number of events committees over the years that councillor Moorehouse and myself have been on. So Christmas Lights, Sandwich Festival, the French Weekend, Lo Weekend. You name it, she's been in all of those. She now runs the St Mary's Church Centre and she's supported a large number of events there. And on occasions, she's been there to open and close it for organisations that have even been given free use of the centre as well. And she's literally devoted herself to the community and community events. And every time there's an event on in this town, she is always there. So that would be my nomination. But obviously, it's a collective decision, so I would propose Siobhan Matthews, but if anybody else wants to. Next, we've got councillor Moorehouse, please stand.
I'll be happy to second you on that.
Second, thank you very much councillor Moorehouse and councillor Wiles.
I certainly support Siobhan, she's always involved in events in the town. But also whether, I don't know if Steve Laslet has been previously nominated because he's served many years as Chair of Sandwich Community Events and has done a huge amount for the town.
That's correct, yeah, that is true, yeah. So not for this award, he hasn't, because this is a brand new. This cap one is complete brand new, we've not done it before. So but whether he's had the civic award, I'm not quite sure. I'd have to check with that. Councillor Bream, please stand.
Thank you. I think it's a very difficult question to answer this because there are so many volunteers.
Exactly.
We've already heard earlier today about the Gays and Salts and Mike Briggs there, who's twenty-two volunteers turning out. You know, regularly on a weekly basis, shouldn't be forgotten. Carol George from Sandwich and Bloom and so forth. So, you know, there are quite a number of people here. Instead of just kind of jumping into kind of voting for one, I think everybody should just have the opportunity to raise the names.
That is correct, councillor Bream, yeah, indeed. As I said, in case there wasn't any nominations, I wanted to put one forward because if there was no other nominations, then, but as you say, there are a large number of people. And the other person I was going to nominate was actually the lady that runs the train station, who's given something like twenty-six years dedicated service. She's employed, but she has worked for a lot of the events in the town as well. The only reason I said Siobhan Matthews was because when I returned from university in two thousand, the year two thousand, Siobhan was always already prevalent in events. So you're talking about twenty-five years of service. So I think her service is the one that extends over any others. Councillor Ripley and then councillor Chukie, sorry.
This is a question, well, one party's question.
Give me a match.
Are we only allowed to put in one combination? Yeah, that's it.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, because everybody says it probably is for so many people.
There are.
I was going to suggest Carol George, but, you know, Siobhan or anybody really is not worthy of it.
Thank you for that. And then councillor Chukie, please.
So just picking up on councillor Bream's point, I think for next year, we should just do it in the way that is suggested. just do it in the way that is suggested, which is that going out to the community itself is a community award. And I think there are also some very individuals, I mean, we should consider that might be very quietly going about some very difficult tasks in the town. It's not just about those that we know, there are others as well, and we should let the community respond. However, the closing date this year is set up for February, so there isn't time to do that. But I would like to propose that for next year, we do it in a bit more measured way and then we can maybe...
Most definitely.
Sometimes, all the names that come up are always the same names and we've got 5,000 residents in each town, so yeah.
We have, yeah. That is a very good point. But the reason for me making my nomination is this 7th of February. And I thought if we, if we don't actually make a nomination tonight, we've got very little time to produce some sort of form and get something out on social media to the community. But if people thought that was a possibility in the next two weeks, then that would listen that. So, ten days. Councillor Morehouse.
I'll suggest that we do publicise this as event for next year. Also, basically, annual town meeting, regional column.
Indeed, that's, that's a very good idea. That's a very good idea. That's great. So as I say, for this year only, I've put a nomination forward. You don't have to accept that. It has been seconded by councillor Morehouse. So we do need to vote on that. And then if that fails, then we can go on to a secondary nomination. If that's agreeable, that's the usual stance of what to do. So proposed and seconded. So those in favour of Siobhan Matthews, please show your green cards or whatever card that you wish.
I guess not.
So that's passed.
Yep.
I think we need to fill in the form, don't we? If you need help to fill in with the details of what's been undertaken.
That's right.
Councillor Morehouse. Thank you very much, councillors. At least that gets us a nomination in on time for the 7th of February. Item number 13, Confederation of the Sinkpools Podcast. Members to consider a report from the town clerk to propose that Sandwich Town Council participate in the Confederation of the Sinkpools Podcast. The recommendation is for the expenditure to be agreed for Sandwich Town Council to contribute and host a recording session for Sandwich. A decision is required on this. This is attachment number 10. Now, I've been in contact with a councillor on this council about this. And I'm very sorry to say, I did not give any report or information before this was brought to council. So I apologise for that. Secondly, I'd just like to point out, this was raised in a meeting that I was hosting, I was chairing. As Speaker of the Sinkpools and Leader of the Confederation, I would not deem it to vote on this at all whatsoever. So I'd be abstaining from the voting. Wouldn't be fair for me to do that. And thirdly, when this was put forward at the meeting, the figure that was put forward, I think it's 750 pounds, it wasn't clear that that 750 pounds was per sinkpore. So in my naivety, I thought the 750 pounds was the cost for the actual work to be undertaken, dependent on how many sinkpores join in, that they would be done. This, I just hasten to add, this work is being undertaken by a professional organisation. So it's being done professionally. But so in my naivety, when, when this was first put forward from the Sinkpores meeting, I thought it was 750 pounds, which would then be split down by if four sinkpores went forward, a quarter each towards that, and if it was six, et cetera, et cetera. But apparently the town clerk has checked and the figure that is quoted is per, per individual sinkpore. So I just wanted that to be 100% clear before you make any decisions or anything like that. I'm going to go with councillor Chukka first. Please stand and discuss.
So from my perspective, I just simply request is missing detail on purpose content audience and who's been engaged to actually deliver the podcast. Was it a selection process? And you've already alerted the fact that it is circa 5,000 pounds, which is quite a lot for a podcast, but you know, maybe they're going out filming on location, who knows? But then also the underneath it all is, where is the demand for this? At the moment, it's a growing community in terms of sinkpores, in terms of its website, its Facebook page. At the moment, it's only got 72 followers on Facebook. It seems a significant investment, so I can't support it in terms of the lack of detail.
Indeed, that's, that's valid suggestion. I think councillor Marine next, and then councillor Black.
Thank you, Mr May. I can't support this due to the fact of the price. For each, for each sinkpore, I think it's quite expensive, considering we don't know that, as councillor Chukka said, the details. I do feel that Sandwich Town Council can spend a thousand pounds on something a lot better for our town than spending it on a podcast for someone to stand there and film a microphone, with a camera on the microphone. I would like to get clarification as well, if other sinkpores are taking part, because it should be a majority of the sinkpores if it were to go ahead. If there's only one that would do it, like Hastings, and the rest of us say no to the expense, I don't think it should go ahead, so I won't be supporting it.
Thank you very much. And then we have councillor Black and councillor Pennington.
Yes, thank you. Is this all 14 in the Confederation? Or is it literally the sinkpores in each town?
No, it would be all up to all 14.
All 14.
It would be open to 14.
So it would be a series of podcasts.
Exactly. It's exactly, it is a series, one for each town. So Sandwich would have their own podcast, Hastings would have their own podcast, and then it would be promoted overall by the Confederation.
I can see some of the smaller towns struggling to fill a podcast for a beach.
Exactly, exactly.
Lovely place. I'm a little bit dubious.
No, thank you for the comments. That is, that's totally acceptable. And we have councillor Pennington and then councillor Morehouse.
Yes, thank you. I just wondered, is this a one-off cost or is there likely to be a follow-up, will be involved in further commitments? I also strongly support councillor Chukka's concerns about the report as it is. I mean, it doesn't really give me a particular view of the benefits or why we should be doing this and how it ties in with the tourism strategy, if that's such a thing.
Indeed, thank you. Yeah, valid comments there. I can tell you, it is a one-off cost. Once it's been produced, that is the product of that sinkpore to do with what they like. But the Confederation was going to promote the podcasts jointly together as well, so...
You can update.
Indeed, thank you. Councillor Morehouse, please.
Some indication of how many of these towns are going to participate in this scheme before we commit to anything, because hypothetically, we could agree to... So why not the other first saying no?
Exactly.
Very, very.
Indeed, indeed. That is, that is the case, that's the case. Oh, we've got councillor Mallett and then councillor Marine.
Thank you, Mr May. I think it's not going to go ahead by words. But were it to, I would also sort of say, something of that nature would require a huge amount of work behind the scenes before you even started spending the thousand pounds, 750 pounds.
Exactly.
And who's going to do that?
Indeed.
When, I think it's...
Indeed. Thank you very much. Thank you for that. Councillor Marine and then councillor Wildes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr May. If the council allows, we'd like to make a proposal for this to be deferred for, so we can get some more clarification on this, more details and to see, and to put the fingers out regarding if the Confederation of other limbs and staff are going to take part in this.
Indeed, thank you for that. Town clerk and then councillor Wildes.
Just to be clear, there is no time. Literally, the deadline was this morning and I've told them that the meeting is this evening. So I'm really sorry, but the producer who's there employing needs to set his timetable and there's a tight timetable. So I think, I'm really sorry, but I don't have any further details to share.
Oh, can I just, councillor Wildes?
I'd be happy to support this if it was going to lead to additional business and tourism in the town. But as has been pointed out, the Sinkpores Federation has almost no online presence. Website is rarely updated. They have 70 followers on Facebook, nothing on Instagram. So where's this podcast going to, who's it going to reach? I think we should be kind to them and say, perhaps you need to get yourself in order before we start funding you to do other things.
Just to reply to your comments, I requested when I became speaker in May, that the website be updated. So it is actually a brand new website. How often they update it, I'm not sure. That is the town clerk of Faversham, I believe it is. I'll continue this one time. And secondly, they had no social media presence whatsoever until I became speaker. And I said that I wanted to put them on social media and they said, okay, but only a safe one. So I was only allowed to put them onto Facebook and I wasn't allowed to put them onto either Instagram or TikTok. So if it wasn't for me, the Confederation wouldn't even be on social media at all. So, but obviously, and this isn't actually my idea, this has come from another sinkpore that has put this forward and they found somebody that can undertake that as well. So, and finally, I was just going to tell you, before I come to any others, is two other matters that perhaps need to be taken into consideration. For those of you that have been at the meetings, the museum manager said she is undertaking some podcasts for Sandwich Tollbridge Fund and the museum. So that's being undertaken by the museum manager. And secondly, I can update you that a certain individual from the Sandwich Local History Society has got full funding for a promotional video, to undertake promotional video on Sandwich, which will be produced in the spring. And that has got the full go-ahead now. So we have councillor Chukka and then one last one from councillor Marine.
Just very quickly, I want to say the website. The biggest event for the Sinkpores this year was the speakers' day. Doesn't feature.
There's a good explanation for that, councillor Chukka. I have photographs and I haven't had the capacity yet to share them. What I will say to everybody is, the Confederation of the Sinkpores, their promotion and everything that they're trying to do is reliant on officers like myself having time. And as we all know, we're very busy on our local councils, we've got a lot of work on our plates. So sadly, the Confederation is another thing for us to consider and, you know, work towards. So that's what I would say. Please be mindful of when we're talking about the social media presence, it is reliant on officers updating websites and Facebook pages. Thank you.
So could I have a, could I tentatively ask if I could have a proposal from somebody on this, because we need to move on. Are you proposing this, councillor?
I made a proposal to defer it. However, the town clerk said we can't defer it. So I would like to change my proposal, please. The council refused this. One, we don't know what money's going to be doing. We have no information. They're not giving us any timeframes or any time to get the details required. As the town clerk said, the Confederation and other councils work it, it's really hard. Our town hall works very hard. So I do feel that we should refuse this.
Sure, indeed. And could I have, so there's a proposal from councillor Marine. Would anybody like to second that proposal at all? Councillor Mallett, so, and those in favour of that proposal, please, please show.
Thank you.
And councillor Marine, please. Is that against?
Against, with councillor Pennington.
You're voting against the proposal?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. So councillor Pennington voted against the proposal. That has actually been passed by the majority, so thank you very much for debating it. Item number 15 is Sandwich Town Council Grant Opportunity for early 2025.
Sorry, Mr May, I've skipped one thing. We've got the confidential...
Oh, beg your pardon. Oh, sorry, yeah, thank you for the update there. Item number 14, confidentiality for agendas report. Following an inquiry from one resident and one councillor, the town clerk has sought legal advice on this matter of confidentiality and legislation used for agendas for the town council. The town clerk has produced a report to share the legal opinion that was gained on behalf of the town council. And members are invited to receive and note this report. And this is attachment number 11. As you see, a minor amendment. Did you need to speak on this, Mr May?
I mean, I won't read the whole report, but just suffice to say that the legal opinion was that we only need to slightly amend the wording on our agenda. And also for the standing orders, although she said they are fit for purpose, we could actually expand on a standing order when we agree them again in May this year. So those are the two requirements that she said we should consider. And I've actually highlighted the standard order that we've adopted in May 2024 and then the considered wording that she's suggested as well.
So councillor Gray, please stand.
I welcome this report, which really indicates what I claim in the report which I originally submitted to you, Mr Chair and town clerk. But I consider that in future, all agenda items should call for confidentiality, should follow the exact wording set out in the public body of admission to meetings there. The town clerk is suggesting an amendment to this on the basis that it would give the council more latitude to exclude the public and press. I don't think we should be having more latitude to exclude the public and press. I would add that the confidentiality are not. And the public body of admission to meetings sets up clearly what should be done. And therefore, I would support this motion, provided that we, the council agrees that the wording on our agenda should follow the wording in the, in the Act and not the suggestive amendment which the town clerk proposed.
Right. Old town clerk, please.
Thank you, councillor Gray. That suggestion was actually from the legal representative. That wasn't my suggestion. That was the actual verbatim from the legal opinion. So it wasn't my suggestion until it was the legal representative.
You did, you did say, in order to give the council more latitude to exclude the public and the press. And I'm afraid I don't, I don't like that idea. Transparency is all and we need to make sure that, that we don't, we don't somehow exceed the confidentiality.
Okay, well, you have to bring your own proposal on that, councillor Gray, because we've got a proposal in front of us that has been put forward by League Way.
I'm going to say, this is just for noting at the moment, but obviously, I can take that away, councillor Gray, and obviously come back to council, because it's just for noting and we can have that report for the next meeting. You want if you want?
All right.
Yeah.
No, I'm agreeing with that.
Yes, councillor Wildes and then councillor Chukka.
Sorry, I'm not quite clear with this report. Is all of the solicitors of dice from the, where it says provided below onwards, right through to the end where the recommendation is? Or is the part that the town clerk has written within that? Because there seems to be a contradiction where it says, on the one hand, we should go on the side of transparency and then further down, it says we should give latitude to exclude the public.
Yeah, that is all verbatim from the legal opinion, yes.
That's true, thank you. To clarify that.
Councillor Chukka. Yeah, I just wanted to remove any doubt around the need to employ a solicitor, because I've seen ex Rangers elsewhere suggesting that, why, why do we just go to Calc and get their advice? So maybe the town clerk could answer that, because I think I know the answer, but I think it's worth recording it in a minute.
Yeah, so I did actually include in the report, I did approach Kent Association of Local Councils and they actually advised to speak to Surrey Hill Solicitors, that they actually use themselves. Because if we want a legal opinion, we need to pay for that. I mean, if we can't rely on something, we can pay for. I mean, if we can't rely on something, we can't pay for it.
So just to make it quite clear, because I had actually, I was one of the people that had actually said to approach Calc to the town clerk. But then Calc had said that we need to actually take legal advice on this. So this legal advice has come from a qualified solicitor. And it has cost the council a lot of money. So if you don't use this advice, you're actually throwing away money that is public money. So it's your own decisions. I would suggest that we, members to receive and note this report. I'm prepared to propose that. Is there somebody to second that to?
There was an amendment, wasn't there? And councillor Gray wants this to come back in a report. So I can do that for the next meeting.
Well, that's what I'm saying, does it need to come back?
Right, I think we see, isn't it?
I think that's what we need to decide, because if it comes back, what are we going to debate when it comes back? We're here now to debate this now. We can't keep coming back with it. So if councillor Gray wants to put another proposal, he can put another proposal in. Councillor Murray, please say.
It clearly states the recommendations for this to be members to receive and note this report. So I think we should receive and note it. If councillor Gray wants to put something in, he can put something in for the next town council meeting.
Exactly. Separate, yeah, separate report. That's what I'm saying, let's get this underway tonight. So that's the proposal, is to receive and note this this report. So was somebody seconding that?
Thank you.
And all those in favour? Okay, and you've got one abstention and one against. Substention has fought askewly and then against from councillor Gray. That is passed by the majority, thank you. Item number fifteen, Sandwich Town Council Grant Opportunity for early 2025. Town clerk's share report that has been produced by four town councillors that proposes to establish an interim funding opportunity for early 2025. Members are invited to debate the proposal and to consider the recommendations. This is attachment number twelve, and a decision is required this evening on this one. The only background that I can give you on this one, if you need any, is obviously that the Tollbridge Fund had voted and agreed not to give any grants at all this forthcoming year. So that that funding opportunity will not be available for residential organisations in the town. The Georgina Maddox Trust has not quite been set up yet, but we're probably about two months away from that being set up to take grant requests there. So there's obviously a gap that is perhaps needs bridging. And these four councillors have worked hard to bring this report to us. So I'll go with councillor Morehouse and then councillor Black and then councillor Pennington.
I should refrain from voting on this because of the chair of the Sandwich community.
Oh, indeed, yes, thank you for that, councillor Morehouse. Councillor Black, please stand.
Yes, thank you. Let me go over a bit briefly the background and then the proposal. On the thirteenth of January, Sandwich Tollbridge Fund, after two earlier meetings about the budget, finalized and agreed the twenty five six budget with no provision for grants. At that meeting, a request for reinstated grants was made, but was declined. Concerned expressed that some organisations might require funds or a confirmation that funds would be made available before the Maddox charity is fully operational. It was pointed out that the SDC budget contains significant reserves. I was asked to develop a procedure to access some of these reserves if necessary, assault the help of the two officers and the three colleagues, and I'd like to thank all of them for their very rapid assistance. The plan was discussed for financial purposes on the twenty second of this month. That meeting endorsed the plan, subject to it being available to any group rather than just groups that had been identified earlier. We, four councillors, asked you to agree to this plan. It is a stopgap to ensure that up to six thousand pounds can be made available before the Maddox charity is on screen. It is without prejudice to future budgets of SDC. To implement it, we requested you approve the policy statement in the attachment and then approve the plan.
Thank you, councillor Chu.
Yes, so one piece of minor detail, albeit important, is that there's a date in there for the responses in terms of stage one, and it should be the fourteenth of February, not the fifteenth. My fault. It was also agreed at FNGP that we would support a cap for any individual applications of up to two thousand. So that needs to be included, so as we don't skew any applications in terms of how many are received. Also, the other thing is, and it's just an observation, closing date for applications isn't more than two weeks away if we adopt it tonight. So we need to very quickly get communications out to allow people to be aware of this.
Thank you very much for that. And councillor Pennington and councillor Murray.
Thank you. I would like to thank councillor Black and the others who've worked on this, because I think it's a very necessary step. And I strongly welcome the proposal. And I simply wondered how the figure of six thousand was arrived at? Is it on the judgment of financial advice? Or is it considered to be what one would more than approve?
Yeah, the finances was to, as I say, it was for a stopgap. So I can tell you that the four councillors were in communication with the responsible financial officer. And this was agreed, the sum of money that we could fire, that would be possible to fire across. So that was on recommendation from the RFO. Councillor Murray, next, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to thank the officers and the councillors that are involved in this, because it took seven days, two weeks in this to do this. So it's quite good shit. A couple of comments. It's a stage one, councillor Chu has just mentioned it, we must get those emails out, all those letters out to the events. I'm more than happy to give some email addresses out to the town clerk if she needs it. Second thing is stage three of the proposed timescale. Sorry, no, stage two is the initial assessment of the applications for panel. It consists of the town clerk, mayor and chair of FNGP. Our disagreement is I think it should be five people. Those three that was mentioned, plus two independent councillors. Not saying myself, because I'm too heavily involved in events and we do a funding. I do feel it should be two extra independent councillors on that panel.
Thank you very much. Councillor Malik, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think it's just an observation that it shows the seriousness that this town council pays to the events. The fact that so much effort has been put into ensuring that even though there's no money, we found the money. And I think anybody who criticises the councillors and says, you know, there are two things going on, there's the council and then there's the events. It's not, we all work together.
Exactly, thank you for those very positive comments. That's very kind of you. Okay, then councillors, so there's a large number of decisions to require here. What I'd like to do is take these individually, because they're separate. Did you have another point?
I did, I think there's only two decisions to take. One is to approve the policy, which is the amendment. And secondly, to agree the whole thing. I'm not sure whether it's large numbers of decisions. I may be mistaken.
I'm only reading the document that says decision required after each section.
Yeah, that's on the report, councillor Black. It stipulates that they are individual decisions. You could take them on block if everybody's comfortable.
I would suggest that might be a good way forward, because we've got a large agenda.
I'm only trying to make sure that it's transparent. So it does say after each section, it does say decision required.
I've got a proposed amendment, Mr Mel, I do feel we need to take these separately, because we need to get this right for people that want to apply for funding from the council.
Exactly, that's how I was going to do it. So number one, the first one is the firement. Town councillor was asked to approve the firement of six thousand pounds from a mislaid and unexpected provision of twenty seven hundred and seventy three. The budget would not exceed and depend, not be exceeded, and depending on the applications received, there may be savings. So in other words, the four amount of six thousand pounds doesn't have to be spent. So I'm proposing that goes ahead. Is there a second of that one? Councillor Black, all those in favour of the firement, please show. Okay, community organisations. Town councillor was asked to invite community organisations with a very urgent need for funding to apply to this fund before the Maddox charity becomes operational. Note A, B and C, as on your document below. I would like to propose that this is community organisations. So are you voting, councillor?
Just a question, do I need to show my notes playing up every decision? Or can I be noted that I'm refraining from voting in the entire block?
Voting on the entire block.
Yeah, I can take that.
Yeah, so no need to put your card up. So we're now voting on only community organisations being able to apply for this. I'm happy to propose that. Councillor Black is seconding, all those in favour? Okay, that's been passed. Grant awarding process, the options are either to update and implement the SDC procedures last used in 2022, or reuse, rebadge and update if necessary the existing STBF process. And this would be to be using the application form and grant award criteria that are detailed via the URLs. So in other words, they're the current ones that we already use. I'm quite happy to propose that we continue to use.
Can I just ask about include a statement about no award is greater than two thousand? Individual award?
Well, need to be an amendment.
About that.
So I'm quite happy with that amendment to propose that. And I believe councillor Black is seconding that. All those in favour? Has been passed. Thank you very much. And the proposed timescale, the timescale for applications should follow the STBF rule, but modified to meet requirements of this exercise. Applications should be submitted by Friday the fifteenth, fourteen, Thursday the fourteenth. Friday, the fourteenth of February. And stage one, stage two, the assessment is to be undertaken by Friday the twenty eighth of February. I believe that date is correct. And stage three, decisions on awards to be made at the full council at the end of March. So I'm happy to propose that.
But I think for stage two, the proposals, whether the author of the report is willing to accept that suggested amendment.
I'm happy to accept that it needs to be, two other councillors have not been involved in this, that's fine.
Okay.
Because it was proposed by councillor Murray that it should be a total of five.
Why should there be five?
I think he made the point that the people who had discussed the point of coming in were involved, that were perhaps too small a group, and he wanted a wider participation. If you want five, I have no problems with five. This is the question the councillor drew on.
Okay, it's your proposal on that one. Oh, did you have a?
I would support councillor Murray on that, I think another two. But I think we should select them right now.
Well, that's what I was just going to say, but can I suggest that it's not anybody that belongs to an events organisation, please?
That's fine. I'd also like it to be independent, so not chairs of any committees or, yes, it's basically chairs of committees within the council, that they sit on their own.
So we've got so far on this. That's, yeah, I was going to say. That's it, yeah. I would be happy to propose councillor Pennington and councillor Ripley, if everybody was happy with that. I don't believe either of you two are on any events committees, are you?
No, events committees.
Okay, then. So I'd be happy to propose those along with the existing three that have been put forward. So this is the proposed timescale. And we will be extending it to five, five members of the committee to actually undertake the verification of the assessment, verification of the applications. So I'm happy to propose that with that amendment. And seconded by councillor Murray, all those in favour? So that's been passed, okay. So these ones here, are these the same or these?
Yeah, those are the same, yeah.
They're the same.
Yeah, the recommendations at the end.
All right, okay then. All right, so that does conclude the voting process.
No, it doesn't, because I specifically said this council needs to agree the policy, which is attachment trust.
Yes, it's an extra policy.
Sorry, because otherwise we don't have a policy.
Oh, sorry.
There it is, yeah.
I'm happy to propose the policy.
So, okay then, so this is, although that's not.
No.
Where is it on here then?
Yeah, no, it wasn't, it's in addition.
In addition, okay then. So as proposed by councillor Black, there is the Sandwich Town Council Grants Policy. Hopefully, you've all been able to see this grants policy. And it's been proposed by councillor Black to adopt that. And I'm quite happy to second that. All those in favour, please show. And that's been passed. Thank you, councillors. And item number sixteen, Heritage and Townscape Committee Terms of Reference, though. Review, members to consider proposed amended terms of reference for the Heritage and Townscape Committee, as recommended by H and T Committee, to consider adoption of the terms of reference for H and T Committee. And this is attachment number thirteen. This is basically to extend their remit to include tourism. I do find this upsetting that, once again, the town council seems to be taking on the workload of both the businesses and the Chamber of Commerce. Just recently, I saw that the Chamber of Commerce were involved in a, in a DDC decision making process recently, which means that the Chamber of Commerce must still be in operation. They did, it was a DDC decision made recently, I've read it. And it said that the Sandwich Chamber of Commerce supported a matter that was in the town. So, but it's a shame that Sandwich Town Council is having to take on, you know, this, it seems to go around the big circle in my eighteen years. Tourism seems to get taken on by other organisations and groups, such as the Compass Group and Chamber of Commerce. And then after a little while, it seems to come back to Sandwich Town Council. And then it's an additional workload for the officers. It's a bit upsetting to that we're going back round to where we were before. Anyway, councillor Wiles was first on this. Please stand councillor.
I think I'm working on a business plan at the moment. And with all the discretionary powers that parish councils have, shopping, retail, etc., it's not one of them.
Exactly.
We get blamed for shops closing in the town.
Exactly.
It's not our responsibility. We're really suffering in this town through the lack of an effective Chamber of Commerce.
Councillor Morehouse.
With regards to tourism, if you remember back in the day, this has passed, we had one meeting per year.
Exactly.
And managed to agree on the figures for visitors in the tourist information centre.
That's correct.
Agree on the opening hours.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thanks to myself and the whole self and councillor Mrs, like councillor Mrs Lassiter, that we managed to get together a tourist agency, which was meeting six times a year. And gradually, over the years, it got diminished. Then brought back by certain other mayors, depending on whether they might be ideal or not. And that's where we are at the moment.
Exactly, as I said, it's gone around in circles, isn't it, really? But the buck always seems to stop at the town council, unfortunately, despite not having any money to undertake this. Councillor Black and then councillor Pennington, please.
Thank you. Um, well, the reason why I raised it is so that the terms of reference just lists toilets and tourism in the same paragraph. Is that really what you want? Because that's what it did, it says at the moment, maybe to manage the public conveniences leased by the council oversight the budget relations, the evidence, the residents and visitors, seeing a regular appointment to set up the strategies, path, policies and plans, and that's it for tourism? And yet we talk frequently in this council about the need for tourism. Now, I propose a new term of reference on the fifteenth of January and it was discussed and subject to a couple of amendments, if this was accepted by the, um, Heritage and Townscape Group. It is an interim, because none of this has ever been discussed with the Tourism Forum. I suspect it was, it may be intended for the first Tourism Forum meeting, but that degenerated a little bit. And so as we're present, that may recall, and it was never discussed. I've spoken to the Chair of the Tourism Forum, is happy to have a discussion at the next forum meeting about the kind of relationships Forum would like to have opposed to what the council said it wanted. Because it produces some incredibly bureaucratic, uh, terms of reference. We've moved on from there, as yourself, you're aware, as you've been able to attend at.
Exactly.
We've moved on tremendously from there. Um, a lot of this work will continue to be done by the Forum. Um, but I do think we need to have something in there as an interim to recognise the importance of tourism, because we talk about it often and it seems to be one of the, the key lifebloods of the town. If we don't put it in here, it isn't anywhere. Now, one of the councillors at the meeting, um, last week suggested it should be a full STC. That's not for debate today, that's at some stage in the future. But, um, the Chair of the, uh, committee and I suggest that this should be an interim until such time as we really have a chance to work out exactly who is doing what. But to leave it with toilets or nothing at all, I suggest it's not quite what we should be trying to do.
Thank you for those comments, Cancer Black. So, uh, Cancer Pennington next, please.
Thank you.
And then Cancer Mallett. Sorry, Cancer.
Hi.
You're sorry.
I have heard, shall I?
Indeed, please do, Cancer Pennington.
I have heard repeated comments from, uh, shopkeepers and others in the town that the council doesn't seem interested in supporting tourism. But I think, uh, this is an essential step. I think Counselor Black's approach has been, uh, remarkably, uh, practical in putting down the marker and saying, let's see where this, uh, leads us. And, uh, if our message to the business community is, we need an interlocutor, oh, well, so be it. But in doing this, we can start this process, so I strongly support this.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, Cancer Chuca and then Cancer Mallett.
Yes, so we discussed this at the last H and T, um, committee meeting, I was the one lone voice out of the group in terms of having some questions around this. Um, I think there's still much more to do to understand the synergy between Tourism Forum and, um, Heritage and Townscape, because as it stands, I think it is a marker rather than where we need to end up. But let's have that debate. Tourism Forum is doing some sterling work, but has very much decided it will generate and, and design its own purpose and future, which is fine. But I think what's happened is that therefore there's a disconnect with the town council now. And somehow Heritage and Townscape is the right place for tourism, but somehow we have to get it right. What we can't have is duplication of effort or absence of understanding of what each group is doing. So, um, marker yes, end result possibly not. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you for those comments. Cancer Mallett, please, member of the council.
Thank you, Cancer Chuca, I think you said most of what I wanted to say about tourism. Uh, it was just to go on to the Chamber of Commerce and Sandwich Town Co- Co- Compass. Uh, sometime that we had, uh, a lady from the Town Compass gave us a short talk about what they were doing. Uh, that it's very informal, it is not a Chamber of Commerce. They don't represent the town, they represent individuals coming together. Uh, with regard to the Chamber of Commerce, um, it's surprising that the Dover District Council is noting the Chamber of Commerce, because I understand it is a single individual, not, um.
They are noting.
Yeah, not a, a group that represents any of the businesses generally in Sandwich. So I think a big lack we have is realistically, there is no Chamber of Commerce. There might be one by name, but it does not represent more than eight percent, if, if that of Sandwich. And I think, as I say, it's a lack and possibly it's, uh, for Heritage and Townscape or an individual to start approaching the businesses and say, what do you want? How do you want to bring eight as a group? Do we work with Compass? How do we make it happen? Um, beyond that, I'm not really sure, I'm sure it is, it is a possibility. Uh, just on that note, and certainly last year with, um, setting up one of the, uh, festivals. Um, uh, I started a, a leaflet which was circulated to every single business in Sandwich, every single public facing book business, to say, this is what is going to happen. And what would be far better is to be able to go to their organisation and say, this is what we're going to do. What do you want to do? How do you want to come into it? Rather than having to reinvent the wheel, which I'll be doing again this year. And it seems to be a complete, it's not a waste of time, because it achieves a huge amount and they appreciate it. But there are better ways of doing it. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Cancer Morehouse, did you have a?
Yeah, thank you, isn't it? Um, I'm, I'm somewhat concerned about the DDC giving credence to the Chamber of Commerce, I don't exist.
I did say I tried looking up when I said, but there was a, a decision about something.
Doesn't need reporting.
There was something that was.
The Chamber of Commerce, as it was, was a, an organisation that met monthly, second Monday of every month. The STC meetings were the first and third month of every, every month. And it was an open invitation to all the businesses, not just the members. And there was two town STC representatives on the Chamber of Commerce. And in addition to that, some of the members of the Tourism Committee also attended the Chamber. So there was some synergy, it's not the very organisation.
Exactly. That's right. And just to add to Cancer Morehouse, because of Cancer Morehouse and myself have been secretary or chairman or whatever of the previous Chamber of Commerce. And the previous Chamber of Commerce used to arrange events and organise, you know, um, statistics to be taken on, on footfall and things like that. And that is really where it, this should really lie, because as with Deal Warm Up Chamber of Commerce, they've got an exceptionally strong Chamber of Commerce that organise all sorts of things, including the Christmas lights. So when you go to Deal and you see the Christmas lights in Deal, you know, you, your breath's taken away because they, they have the power, the money and the organisation to do that. Here, what we're doing is we're bringing it back to the town council to fiddle with. Whereas really it should be a, a, a separate standalone organisation who is, is, is getting funding. I mean, they could get funding from Sandwich Town Council or the Tolbridge Fund, but then undertake the provision of tourism initiatives, you know? I mean, when, um, Cancer Morehouse and I were on there, I got the, um, Dominic Parker from Gogglebox or Googlebox or something, and I got him to be the chairman of that. And, and of course he brought all his contacts, he brought people down from London to do an assessment of Sandwich, how should we be marketing it? What's the USP? This, the town council would not have the ability to do any of that. So what we're missing here, what we're missing here, as Cancer Black said, we're putting an interim thing in, which will barely suffice for something. What we've really, what this town council really needs to do, once and for all, is get a, an organisation set up external to the town council to, to actually bite the bit and take on proper tourism, um, for the businesses here in Sandwich. Until we do that, you're gonna get what I just said a minute ago, is the wheel goes around and it comes around and it ends up back on our table, desktop, and we have to pick it up again. So, but that's only my opinion, good. Cancer Black, please.
At no stage have I made any discussion or reference to the Chamber of, uh, Commerce. Or, or Compass, this is purely Tourism Forum. And we are actually doing, we're pretty proactive, as, uh, you know, as councillor, Rudy knows and so on. Um, we're doing this, we're pretty proactive. We're not a Chamber of Commerce, so let, please not get that in the water, bothered by that. That is a separate issue that needs to be resolved.
It does.
I have no idea what the answer is. This is purely to give the town council some focus on tourism. It is going to have to be amended, it's got to have to be worked at, because, um, at the moment it's big bits and pieces. We want to make this much more, much more solid. And as I say, I've spoken to, uh, the Chair of the Tourism Forum, we will put this on the agenda. Because we want to ask more, what do you think the council should be doing and what should we be doing? And at the moment, that is not particularly clear. As a joke, wearing my Tourism Forum hat, we're doing a heck of a lot. Wearing my councillor hat, we're doing much less, but then it's issue of resource.
Exactly. Cancer Wiles, and then we need to go to.
The very next one, please.
I, I hear what Counselor Black said, but the opening statement is to work with businesses. Now, if the Tourism Forum is working with multiple businesses, that's a lot of work. It's much easier to deal with a single body, so that's why we need a Chamber of Commerce. As I say, it's not our goal. Your opening remark was, we should not be taking on more projects, but someone needs to take a look on this, because the town is suffering because of the lack of the Chamber of Commerce that we can deal with.
As Cancer Black said, the town council hasn't got the resources to take it on, unfortunately. It's a shame we haven't got, so anyway, um, moving forward with this one. Um, so I'd like to, uh, take the decision on this and, um, uh, recommendation is council members to receive and agree the amended terms of reference recommended by the Heritage and Townscape Committee. Um, so do I have a proposer and seconder for this, please?
I suppose.
Uh, so we've got Cancer Black proposing and Counselor Ripley is seconding. All those in favour, please show. And that item, or this one abstention? Oh, two abstentions. So, did you get that, Cancer Chuca? That item has been passed by the majority, thank you.
Mr Mayor, can I call a point of order, please, just quickly? It's nothing bad.
If it's in process.
It's in the process, uh, we're running, it's now, uh, eight minutes past nine, we've got someone who's been sitting there for quite long time. Can we either defer some of these in the last few items or if they're not time limited? Or can we, uh, please have a five-minute break?
Indeed, yeah, indeed, indeed, so, um. How long do you think on this?
That's up to you, can you have to do a five-minute break?
Okay, well, we've got one. Okay then, okay then, yeah, um, okay, I'll propose from the Chair that we take a five-minute recess. But could you all be back in this chamber by quarter past nine at the latest, please? Yeah, she's a bit stable on that last one. This is, it's. I mean, I don't know what the answer is, but I mean, I mean, as long as I am, but there is something that is. With, uh, if some assaults do the DDC and it's said, uh, Sandwich Chamber of Commerce. Good. I think it was a great. You didn't, it was, was it, yeah? But I saw it and I was astounded to see that it's sort of. Sandwich Chamber wasn't that good. Because it was defunct towards. It's not, yeah, indeed. What we would do if we have enough money. Exactly, yeah. That was totally just, I mean, that was something that one of the other, the Federation, um, one of the members of the Federation was, he put it forward, these problems. No, exactly, you should stop. I said that, so I wasn't really champion yet. And then I actually said at ten o'clock, yeah, my wife would live, so I. Somebody wanted to.
I saw very quickly, it was like.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly, exactly, my daughters, one of them. Can I draw the, uh, the meeting back together again, please, councillors? And, um, we rejoin on item number seventeen, Citizens Advice Dover Deal and District Request. Town Council has received a letter from Citizens Advice for Dover Deal and District with a request for financial contribution. Uh, this is attachment fourteen and the decision was required. Um, just before we get into any discussions, I'd like to say I find the letter very ambiguous, um, and I don't really know, it seems to be almost what is termed the fishing exercise. Um, uh, send out as many letters as possible to get the money in. They are a fantastic organisation, they do a lot of work in the community, particularly for those that can't afford legal, um, a legal aid or what have you. But I do find this a totally inappropriate way to appro- approach council with an ambiguous letter for funding. I would prefer, my pro- I would prefer, my proposal, but obviously we'll have a discussion on this, would be for the town clerk to get back to Citizens Advice Bureau and ask them to put in a formal grant application, as everybody else has to. So we do not send miscellaneous amounts to organisations to ambiguous letters. We'll go on to the deputy mayor.
What the mayor said, that's exactly my point, is I think we should point them towards Maddox's Fund for the Future. In the short term, we've got an interim arrangement, but I'm not certain that they feel that they're in dire need of money, money's within a very short period. But that's our route at the moment. If we allow one, then there'll be others that will follow. So we have to be very steadfast about this.
That's the Gray next, and then councillor Fortescue.
The same, the same, really. If their own problem, they're making themselves. As I think you all know, they're operating from the Jubilee Centre on Mondays here. They've done nothing to promote themselves. Their website still says they're at the Guildhall on Mondays. We've said to the CAD, if they produce a leaflet promoting themselves, we, the Jubilee Centre, would distribute it to every house in Sandwich. You've never taken us upon this. Some Mondays, their people never even appear at the Jubilee Centre, leaving clients standing around wondering what's happening. They don't even tell the Jubilee Centre when they're not appearing. Really, I've got very little sympathy for what they're not doing.
Thank you for those...
I refuse this request.
Thank you for that update, councillor Gray. We had councillor Fortescue, please.
An additional factor, the statistics that they provide, perhaps unwisely. Four percent of the people who deal with CAD locally are from Sandwich. And it's clear from the statistics they provide, that the vast majority of their customers come from Dover.
Indeed, that's right, thank you for that comment. And councillor Wiles? Would you like to move to a vote? Indeed, yeah. So my proposal was that we, that the town clerk gets back in touch with them and directs them to our grant awarding bodies. Do I have a second for that proposal? Councillor Wiles, all those in favour, please show. That's passed, thank you very much councillors. Item number eighteen, proposed solar development at land to the west of Ramsgate Road. Town Council has received a letter on behalf of RPL Solar Limited to share details of a proposed solar development project at land to the west of Ramsgate Road. Sandwich, members are invited to receive and note the details. This is attachment fifteen. I don't really want to go into a full discussion on this, because I'd see this more as a planning issue. But if anybody has any burning proposals or issues, then councillor Marine...
I don't know what the standard of the state, but would it be an idea to move this to planning? So we consider planning, the planning committee can speak about it, vote for it, and then just bring it back to the council.
That could be your proposal, councillor Marine. So councillor, I like that.
Yeah, I was just going to say that this particular application to buck the trend of we're going to build on bird territories, we're going to build on farmland. It is wasteland. And if anything, in particular because we have climate change emergencies, all of this stuff. We should actually sort of say, go for it, we support it.
Thank you for that comment. So we've had a proposal from councillor Marine to move this item to the planning committee. And that's been seconded by councillor Franklin. All those in favour, please show. On against that, councillor Black. That has been passed by the majority, thank you. Item number nineteen, granite steps, requests from the White Mill. Town Council has received a request from the White Mill Rural Heritage Centre and registered charities seeking permission to use the granite steps to repair a footpath on the site. This is attachment number sixteen, and a decision is required on this. Before anybody speaks about this, I'd just like to remind all of you that the White Mill is a town council asset. So, sorry, Tolbridge, sorry, Tolbridge asset. So the granite steps are being used to make good a pathway on one of our own assets. So just bear that in mind when you discuss it. Did anybody, councillor Chu?
Yes, so I'm reluctant to support it as it stands, I think there's more work to do. So the primary purpose we've kept those sets is for any damage or need to renew on forecourt. Picking up on the point, the White Mill is actually separate, it's a separate charity. They lease the Tolbridge Fund asset, and so they are separate and standalone. I prefer to see a recommendation from our property manager in terms of... Because what's not clear to me in this report is how many of those sets are going to be used. Is it all of them, or is it a small number? We agreed, when we discussed about them being sited there, we agreed that there was round about approximately nine hundred sets. So I don't know how many of those are going to be used for this pathway. I mean, I think really importantly, the White Mill is a listed building. The curtilage includes the grounds. If there is going to be the laying of a path, we have to be very clear about whose responsibility it is to make sure there's no issue about taking in foreign sets. The sets that are there, I don't know what they're like. Is it, are they the same? All of that has got to be brought to us as a council before we say, yes, they can be used, in my opinion.
I'll get councillor Franklin next, because you know the background.
I mean, everyone from this council should have been up to the White Mill. I mean, they've been on the council now nearly two years. They all know that some of the footpaths are not very good, they're pebbly paths. And the paths are already there. These sets, if they're used, will be just set on sand. So whoever need fibre or arthurs, they can just take them out and bring them here, put the damaged ones there, turn them upside down, because it's generally one side. And generally, I suspect if they're using these sets, they may be, they're planning, aren't they? They're not being much... So all we're doing is, is arm over property, and we're just going to make it safer and also better for wheelchairs. Because at the moment, the access is not very good for wheelchairs, especially those pebbly paths and some of the... So to me, it'd be a lot safer, and it'd be a lot safer for disabled access. So I'm all for it.
Thank you very much. Councillor Marine?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I agree with what councillor Franklin's saying, however, if we have to take the sets up, then they have no path again. The other thing, I do agree with what councillor Chuca's saying. I just want clarification whether they have to put in a planning application to do this as well, because it's a listed area. And that's enough, the conservation officer needs to actually get involved. So that's a bit of a grey area, because I haven't seen any planning applications for it. So I'm a bit stiff.
I think it's a repair, Mr Marine, it says repair, actually. Councillor Pennington, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Pennington. Yeah, I think we should strongly support White Mill's and the work that it does. And I think it's a huge asset. But I agree with councillor Chuca that this presentation, as it stands, needs much more work. And I would suggest that the property manager has a look at one of the best options for the path. How many sets would be required and so on, before we take it...
Councillor Murray, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would prefer, my preference would be to see them actually being used. Because they're pretty well indestructible. If they're being stored, they're taking up space. I do accept that it needs correct planning and notifying, logging in the sense of, in fifty years' time, because we upgrade the forecourt every fifty years. The only person who might be here in fifty years is Dime. To make sure we, in fifty years' time, we know who's sets are which. But, yeah, otherwise, I would leave you for that, yes.
So I would like to put forward a proposal that we defer a decision on this matter until the property manager can come back to us and actually determine the issues that have been raised in this chamber tonight.
Can I just add to that, that it's done in time for the next meeting? We keep this tight, so therefore it's only a month's delay. There's only a small number of questions need to be answered. And as long as we've got that, we should be supporting the White Mill.
So that be done before the February meeting? So did I have a second for that?
Last second, then.
Okay, councillor Marine. All those in favour of deferring this till February meeting? Thank you, that's been passed. Item number twenty is staffing strategy, caretaking and cleaning. Members are asked to consider a report on staffing strategy for caretaking and cleaning, which has been produced by the property manager. Members are also invited to receive and note the report. This is attachment seventeen, a decision is required on this. This was actually, if you want to blame anybody, this was actually my initiative. For those of you that have been here a long time, you would have seen that staff come and staff go, staff come and staff go, people get trained up, we spend a lot of money. In order to recruit somebody now, it costs several thousand pounds just to recruit somebody. Then to train them up, they're not actually suitable to undertake a job role for several weeks or months even. You know, and this process, I spoke to the town clerk, and I said, I don't want this process to continue. So when the previously recent caretaker left our employment, I said I want some sort of new initiative or model to be drawn up. Because also with the, we've had a number of issues around caretaking roles because of the time. It's working and social hours, weekends and evenings. It is very difficult if anybody's sort of perhaps unable to undertake parts of the role. There is also now a matter to consider, which you would have seen from the finances, that we do need to, on several occasions, we do need to employ security staff to support events here in the Guildhall, as well as events outside. So as I say, I spoke with the town clerk and the property manager, and I asked the property manager to come up with a solution and a report. We've had a meeting since this report had been drafted. And I believe it's been updated, isn't it, since we first saw it? So there was originally a draft, there was a number of issues that were raised, that were improved. But basically, this would be a scheme whereby, instead of employing what they call an FTE, full-time permanent position, for which the on costs are absolutely colossal now. So if you're looking at employing somebody and paying them about twenty-four thousand pounds, you could be looking at, with on costs, that being in the figure of about thirty or thirty-one thousand pounds to this council. So it's very important that we spend public money wisely. Now, with this model, with this solution, this will enable the property manager to actually employ staff members as and when they're needed, and only pay for when we use them. And this will include the toilets, and the cleaning and the caretaking. But can I hasten to add, just in case this is going out publicly, this does not affect any of the permanent employees that are with us currently. Their jobs are one hundred percent safe, there's no changes to the establishment that we currently have. But we're not going to employ more people and pay the enormous cost. So this is the model for going forward for caretaking and cleaning of the Guildhall and the toilets. So it's open for discussion, and then obviously, we need to make a decision on this. But it'd be nice to see that it goes in the right direction. Councillor Pennington, please.
Thank you. I have no problem with what you've said, and I think that the fundamental message of the report is right. I have two presentational points. One is, the report says constantly, I do this, I do that, and I didn't know we'd written a report. Secondly, I didn't know if this has been seen by Human Resources Committee or not.
Yes, that's where it goes next.
So, oh, thank you very much for that comment. So, yeah, so it's been drawn up by the property manager, so he's probably using the royal whip.
Yeah, we've just been asked to note, I haven't seen it until it came out with these papers. So my expectation is the HR committee will take time to analyse this in detail. And then it will come back to STC, where's it a formal title she made? Because I think there's a lot of detail in here that needs to be looked at sensibly, and see if this...
Indeed. Councillor Black?
I was going to, not that. This really is straight from the agreement of the HR committee. There are quite a few questions about this. The saving is because you don't need the person all the time. But you can be pretty sure that the hourly rate will include the equivalent, where they're their own self-employed, you know? And it has to include some element for sick pay, and it has to include some... No, no, they have to have some private rate, because otherwise they ain't going to get paid at all. And they will need to have some rate. It's up to them how they do it. Of course, it's a time-up, but if you think it's not going to be reflected in the hourly rate, I think that we are kidding ourselves.
Disagreeing now. Can I just put you straightforward about this? We will be paying an agency a set fee for the staff that would come in. Now, that set fee is what is paid to the employee that would come in to do the work. Now, what they do about their national insurance and sick leave and all that is down to that employee.
Absolutely. And that's what I'm saying.
So if theoretically, let's say theoretically, the payment was thirteen pounds an hour, we will be, this council would pay thirteen pounds now. We would not be addressing their sick leave or maternity leave, or, more importantly, their pension. So let's just make sure that's clear. It will be an agency supplying somebody on a theoretical, I'm just saying, say thirteen pounds an hour, and that is the end of story. So we do not have to pay all the additional on costs that you have for other ones. I would also like to say that with the, with the savings that will hopefully theoretically come forward from this, it could help us to address some of our other staffing issues that we've got in other areas. I'll come back to you, councillor Black. I've got councillor Breen, councillor Marine, and then councillor Black.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Very pleased that it's already proposed, that this should go to HR. Personally, I've got great concerns about employing agency-supplied workers, because legislation is changing now. So that if that agency-supplied worker is working just in one location, they then effectively become an employee and are entitled to sickness, and are entitled to holiday pay and so forth. This is changing legislation, I can assure you, Mr Mayor. So there are lots of questions, and this needs to be looked into in a bit more detail. We also need to look at succession for the caretakers. And we've also got an issue of the town sergeant. And maybe by recruiting the right person, this person could fulfil the role of the town sergeant as well. So I think there are a number of things to be considered here, and it needs to go to HR.
Current ruling, as long as they don't work two years or more, they're not classed as a permanent employee. So I believe it's councillor...
Yeah, I do, so thank you, Mr Mayor. I do feel that it's, when it's needed, it's just another term of zero-hour contracts, and I don't like them. I've never liked zero-hour contracts. I've been on one, and they're not nice, because one minute you could be working two, three weeks, thinking, oh great, I'm going to get paid. And then you could be not working for another two, three weeks, and then how are you going to pay your bills after? It's just not acceptable. The other thing is, is that obviously myself, councillor Franklin, councillor Breen, working told them to report to the HR committee regarding reinstating the town sergeant. This is very much a call for within the town. And I do feel that this shouldn't have come to STC first, it should have gone straight to HR first, and then to look at it, then to discuss it. And then if councillors wanted to put their opinions in at HR meeting, then they could have done. So, yeah, I don't agree with this at all.
Councillor Black, did you want to come out?
Yes, I did. I fully endorse the effective hours, that's great. We only need a person for a limited number of hours, not a normal contract employment, where you have to fill us up. That's what the saving is. But if it's an agency, then there will be an agency fee somehow. I saw this person was contracted directly with us. But again, this is all the detail that you have at the HR committee. But I do suggest you listen very carefully, councillor Breen. Legislation is actually not as clear-cut as some organisations would have... as some organisations would have you believe, and a lot have been badly spun and finding out there actually are, not just workers, they're employees.
No, indeed, I agree with that. So, I was quoting South Eastern Railways. It's what South Eastern Railways have introduced instead of taking on permanent employees. So, I'm just quoting, I'm quoting a National Rail transport company. So, councillor Gray was next.
I think this matter must be referred to the H R committee to investigate it fully, properly, and come back to us with a trouble well already well thought out report, if this definitely isn't.
Thank you for that. Councillor Moore?
The proposal, that's it.
Any others? Okay then, so could I have a proposal and a second, that this goes to? Goes to H R committee? All those in favour? Thank you, that's passed.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I just add that the property manager should be thanked for his stimulating opportunities to look at the status quo, and let's not decry that, because that's important, that's what we should be doing, is looking how do we make the council more efficient, but still deliver the services we're expected to deliver. So I think he needs to be thanked for...
Exactly. Please, Donald. Could you make note of thanks to the property manager? Thank you very much. Item twenty-one is date of the next full council quarterly meeting, which will be Monday, the twenty-fourth of February, twenty twenty-five, at seven P M. Thank you very much for your attendance tonight, councillors.